All the meeting to order. Welcome to the Board of Education for the School District of Waukesha, our regular board meeting. It's Wednesday, December 13th. I hope everyone got here safely tonight, and I hope when you leave, you'll drive carefully to get home to your family. So, let's start the meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Deeds.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
And will you also, Sue, verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Typically, we have bright lights, but we don't have that this evening. So, we are going to roll into our recognitions for this evening. We do have one recognition that will be announced by our, um, our very own...
Chris Headstrom.
Wow. It's been a long day. Chris, I just was talking to you two minutes ago.
I was waiting to see if, like, are you going to call me up, or are you going to call?
No, I just, I'm, wait, wait just a second, let me take a sip of coffee.
I noticed we have a new podium here, it's for extra tall people. So, um, thank you, thanks, Mr. Como. The Employee Recognition Award for December is being presented this evening to Rebecca Templeman. Becky, would you please join me?
Becky has been working as a library assistant with the School District of Waukesha since 2013. She is currently at Hadfield Elementary School. Rebecca's nominators begin by saying that Becky has performed above and beyond what is expected in her position as a library aide at Hadfield. Becky has a lot expected of her, too. She maintains the library, keeps up with her duties in that role, and finds time to read to classes of students. But along with that, she also does an outstanding job of troubleshooting student iPad problems, facilitates the repair and return to learning process for damaged iPads, and spends time speaking with each student she works with about digital citizenship issues and personal responsibility with the devices. Becky also builds weekly activities into her plan with classes coming into the library that focus on maker-type activities aimed to get students hands-on in their learning. The enthusiasm for her work simply pours from Becky as she works with the kids during these activities. On top of all this, Becky is a positive force to be reckoned with at Hadfield. She is always smiling, always helpful, always cheery, and always student-centered in her thoughts and actions. The teaching staff relies upon her for support and assistance. Students who may otherwise struggle to connect with adults find Becky to be approachable and understanding. And in turn, she puts them to task in the library, whether that is helping out with things she needs done, or simply sitting and reading or working with them one-on-one. It is simply amazing how much Becky gets done in a day, and all with a smile and a bubbly personality. And don't forget, these assistants do not, when we say gets done in a day, that's a few hours in each day. Because of Becky's hard work, the iPad repair process is almost entirely managed at Hadfield without any additional support from IT. Students engage in makerspace-like activities without an additionally assigned person at Hadfield to support the work and teachers, to support the work, and teachers rely upon Becky for support in the library with their students. Becky often leads the students in literacy-focused activities around reading and finding books in the library. The conversion to a managed, to managed Apple IDs from private Apple IDs was handled almost entirely by Becky without additional teacher or IT support. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Rebecca Templeman on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
This makes me seem like I'm really amazing.
You are, yes. Look at the crowd that's here for you.
Obviously, this is, I'm, you know, a little overwhelmed, and when I first heard this, it took a couple days for it to soak in. I couldn't believe it because I am just sincerely grateful and humbled. I feel like I have the best of all worlds. I work with amazing staff. I get to work with kiddos every day and make a difference, and all doing everything I love. I'm surrounded by books every day. In my world, that's like woo-woo. Right? And I also then, on the other half, get to work with an amazing IT staff, too. And I love the mix of all of it. So, um, thank you for all these kind words, and of course, to Brian, who is also an amazing supporter in my life, too. But again, it wouldn't happen without all of the wonderful people that I work with. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone. And I want to say thanks to my family and friends who've been here to support me.
There's that smile. Congratulations. Thank you for what you do. Obviously, there's a lot to do here, so thank you, too.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I love when you can see passion in people, and Becky definitely is passionate about what she does and has a lot of support tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, we're going to hear from our student representatives from Waukesha North. We have Angie and Matt here. Please come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Angie Skywache. I'm a senior at Waukesha North High School. I'm very strongly involved in our drama department, being a stage manager and also head of the wardrobe and costuming that goes on for all of our shows.
I'm Matthew Hallit. I'm also a senior at North, and I'm part of the, I was the captain of the North volleyball team and captain of the swim team, and then I'm athletic advisory council there and on the marching band, so, yeah.
So, we're going to be telling you things that are happening around our school, so activities and clubs. So, to start it off, we have our drama department. This fall, we did The Creature Creeps, which was a Transylvanian comedy. People really enjoyed it. They liked it when we slipped in the superintendent in one of our lines when they came to see the show. People were really impressed with our set this year. We have a lot of hard-working and dedicated kids in our stagecraft classes and after-school crews. They were like really high, like 12-foot walls that were foam, and they like engraved rocks and painted them, so they were very detailed. We are now starting our musical, which is Nine to Five this year, which is about three female secretaries that decided to get revenge on their boss, who has a negative attitude toward women, and they abduct him and start running the office themselves. It's going very well. We are in the second week of rehearsal. Crews started this week, and we have a lot of new kids and a lot of underclassmen that are coming in, which is always great to see. We also started building the set this week, and we started to teach the boys how to dance, which is always the best part. Our show opens February 8th through the 11th, and it's $10 to get in. Our choir department just had their first concert to a full house at, in our auditorium on December 2nd. It was the Sounds of the Season concert where we did lots of Christmas songs. We also just had a concert in June in Carnegie Hall where Highland, Mr. Highland, our choir director, took a bunch of kids to New York and they sang "In Carnegie Hall." Chamber Singers is going to be performing in our Savior's Lutheran Church of O'Connell Milwaukee for a Christmas concert on December 17th at 4:00 p.m. And then, our next concert is with the Butler Choirs, where we are collaborating on a Pops and Broadway evening on February 20th at South High School at 7:00 p.m.
All right. Our band, this year, our marching band did very well. They went, uh, they placed first out of 28 bands competing in Illinois, the Illinois competition, and they got second in the WSMA State Performance. They are hoping to recruit a lot more people for the next year, as a lot of seniors were this year. The concert brands have an upcoming performance at North with the Butler eighth graders coming on, coming up on Monday at 7:00 p.m. The Key Club, they have 80 members this year, it's a lot. Started the, the year with Hurricane Irma fundraiser, and they gave all the money to the J.J. Watt Foundation. The Trick or Treat, they tricked treated for canned goods on Halloween, and they collected over 1,300 pounds of food for the food pantry of the Waukesha County. They helped at the Waukesha Christmas Parade and the Santa Run and donated 10 full Thanksgiving baskets to the North Star families in need, and the baskets included a 22-pound turkey, potatoes, stuffing, cranberries, pies, rolls, green beans, corn, and milk. They go each month to play bingo at Linden Grove in Waukesha. This Thursday night, they will help do unloading of trucks and toys, toys and gifts for the Christmas Clearing Council at St. Matthew's Church in Waukesha, and they're volunteering at Lowell February 2nd for their Super Bowl.
Our Girl Talk Club just did face painting at We Are, at a We Are Waukesha event on Saturday, December 2nd, and this weekend, they are volunteering at a Christmas clearing toy shop where they help bilingual families pick out toys for their kids. They continue to raise funds for their scholarship that they started by providing healthy smoothies for the students in the mornings. They are always looking for opportunities to volunteer, and they are really excited to work on their Denim Day that will happen in April that raises awareness for sexual assault and are hoping to make it bigger this year.
All right. The Student Council, they just ran a blood drive. It was very good, very, a lot of people showed up and gave blood and helped donate, and they are helping with the winter assembly this year.
Our yearbook is doing very well this year. We sold 285 out of the 450 pre-ordered. Our theme this year is unfinished, which I actually have our cover. It means that just because if we're a senior and you're graduating in high school is over, or the school year's over, that it's not over. You still get to live a fun, I guess, life. So, our, our theme goes with the, all of the boxes and circles are unfinished, so in all of our pages, none of the borders around the pictures are going to be completed, and this is also our color scheme, lots of pastels and gray. We just finished our deadline number two, which was mostly all of the division pages, and our staff and senior best ofs. DECA on Saturday, January 6th, has 30 students from North DECA program will be competing at Kettle Morains High School for a district conference. Students will take on an online marketing test along with conducting two role plays in front of an adult judge. Our DECA chapter this semester has ventured on two field trips. In October, they attended a behind-the-scenes tour with the Milwaukee Wave, and in November, students went to UW Milwaukee School of Business where they met alumni, sat in on a college lecture, and toured the campus.
The Ecology Club, they coordinated all the outside learning area, the picnic tables and raised, raised bed gardens, and they also did all the gardening around North. They also get together and do field trips. For example, the, they did the corn maze, pumpkin picking hikes, and they toured the recycling center. They are currently collaborating with the special ed students to collect cans for participating classrooms. Proceeds will go to having ice cream social that they have every year and award ceremony for them at the end of the year. We are, they are also working of a holiday appreciation gift to be distributed to the staff before break. FBLA, or Future Business Leaders of America, hosted a toy drive throughout the month of November. People donated hats, mittens, toys, and books. They received a nice box of items that will be given to the Christmas Clearing Council of Waukesha County, and they will be distributing them to the families in need this weekend. In February, they will compete in their first ever, the first competition this year. The Regional Leadership Conference will be located in Peewauckee High School and will compete against students in events like journalism, business ethics, sports, entertainment management, banking, and financial systems, and economics. The students in the top three in our region will compete at the state event in La Crosse in April.
So, our Safe Club went to a G-Safe Conference, which is mainly for students to learn more about equality amongst race and gender. They are also planning Empowerment Week and Service Learning Day, which they're hoping to make bigger and better this year. Our dance team placed third in hip-hop last weekend, and their, it's their first time in D1 Palm. So far, they've done really well, and they placed sixth last weekend, which is their best they've placed for D1 Palm. Our cheer team went to an overnight camp this summer and learned lots of cool new stunts that they can't wait to show off at competitions. Their cheer dance team placed first in their last competition, and their normal competition team placed second.
Basketball, girls and boys. The girls' practices are going well. They're suffering some injuries, but that's making their team a little smaller, but their first conference win against West, and they won two non-conference games, and they just won a game last night against McGowanago. So did the boys, they, they won at home against McGowanago, and so far, their record is 2-2, and, um, they only lost to West and Hartford, I think, so, yeah. And then, swim and dive. We started out with a great season. There are 40 guys this year. Last year, we only had about 30 or 28, or, uh, it's, this is a lot more. It's, it's a lot. We have 16 incoming freshmen, like, it's, it's just overwhelming for the coaches, but they're getting it done. And the JV just got second overall in the last meet, which they got last, last year, so it really boosted them up. The next meet is at home tomorrow against Muskego and Arrowhead. And then, hockey, they're really good. They're usually really good. They're staying consistent with their winning season, and their record so far is 4-1. Their next game is at home against Marquette at 7:00 p.m. on Saturday. Wrestling is doing very well. They have a couple new people on the team. They did pretty good against Waukesha South, and their next meet is this Thursday.
So, now getting into academics that are happening around our school. ACT is February 27th, which is the juniors-only day, so yay, we don't have to go to school one day. Olivia Bennett was on TMJ4 for the ACT prep class, and they asked her what you do in the class, tips she learned in the class, and what she does outside of class to prep for the test. The ACT prep class is Tuesday through Friday, it's the first and second quarter. AP classes are always prepping for the AP test. Mr. Nelson, who teaches all of the history AP classes, is using the College Midterm in their AP US History for a study guide, and it's helping them understand how to pass the test better. And in AP English, they are focusing on multiple choice skills.
Uh, the Cornell notes, it was a little rough in the beginning, that everyone has their own way of taking notes, but it, uh, the staff really said it was beneficial in college, and they're doing it in all the classes now, and they're just really pushing Cornell notes, and it was a little rough in the beginning, but it's, it's really working well right now, so.
Our administration always comes into our classes just to see what we're up to, like our lovely principal over there, Ms. Newcomer. They come in and sit down and sit in on our lessons, and it's really nice to see them come in, and it's good to see that all the students stay focused. And they also come out and support all the sports and clubs. Like, I see a bunch of the administration at the players, and I see them at the games all the time, which is very nice to see.
The eighth graders came in, and it was a really good turnout. They were really excited, and to see all the stuff we have at North. And they, they show them the clubs and sports and they can get involved in, and they seemed really excited to get into high school, so it was really good. The assembly is next Friday, and they're calling up the top 10 students. The 30, 30-plus ACT people will be called up as well, and we also have the very popular student versus staff basketball game.
Our AE classes are currently working with career cruising, and the seniors are looking at applying for scholarships and college applications because that's a thing, and it's scary. Our Avid classes are going very well. I talked to one of the teachers there, which is Mr. Demille, and he said that, he learned that Avid is a way that helps teachers other classes that aren't an Avid class, and helps them prepare for college, teach them how to communicate, how to stay organized, and ask good questions, and also how to collaborate with other students, which I know a lot of kids struggle with because it's like, I've never talked to that person before. It's different because it gives him simple strategies to help every student access the curriculum, and he enjoys it a lot, and it's a lot of fun energy in the classroom. So, we just wanted to say thank you for having us. Have a good holiday and enjoy the rest of your winter.
Mr. Baumgart, we have a few questions for you. Yeah, we'll have a couple. I was very pleased in something I heard in your, you're mentioning there. A couple weeks ago, I was at a meeting with a lot of adults, and one of the concerns they expressed was volunteering among young people. Volunteering is drying up, and I says, wait a minute, I don't think you're right. I says, if you've got, if you got to see some of our high school kids and the work they're putting in on a volunteer basis, you'd be surprised, and volunteering is coming back. And I think you've just reaffirmed for me the fact that, what a wonderful whole list of volunteering that you presented to us, and that's so important to the world, you have to believe it, do it, keep it up, it's gonna, it's gonna give you payback one day. Thank you. Mrs. Brusink?
Yes, just thank you for your very thorough report. I think you covered just about everything.
We try.
Sounds like, and I know that, North is a very special place to be, so you made that certainly positive tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, your energy was high, and you're very comfortable speaking. It was very evident that you're comfortable and just professional in how you presented yourself tonight, so you did an, did an excellent, excellent job, and your principal's really proud of you sitting in the back, we could tell. Now, 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 you're gonna have to, we know Mrs. Newcomer comes into the classes every once in a while, right? You had mentioned that.
Yep.
Just gotta see if you can get her in to take a test, too, with you guys.
All right. That's a good idea.
That's your next challenge. Anybody else? Mr. O'Brien?
I'd like to know if she passes the test, too.
I'll take my anatomy test, I took today.
You can take an AP psych test.
There you go. There you go. Well, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Angie. We appreciate your report. Look forward to seeing you in a few months. Well done. Now is the time where we give our citizens a chance to address the board. As in past practice, we limit those, that to three minutes per person, and then, at about the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mrs. Brusink will give you an indication to wrap things up with about 30 seconds to go. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit and to refrain from any, using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations will be prohibited from speaking at future meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, refrain from verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from meeting, and also, in order to respect our speakers tonight, please turn off your cell phones at this time, if they are not already off. Sue, did we have anyone sign up to address the board tonight?
No, we didn't.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to, that hasn't signed up, would like to address us? Mr. Reese?
Yeah, I did. I apologize. I, I think, I would like to thank all the board members who talked to me about the global education course that's coming to the middle schools, potentially, and as well as Dee Garcia for taking the time out, for taking her personal time to talking to me, you know, the outside of hours after school one night. I, I, just some things, again, that I want to go over, is that it appears to be a social studies course under Language Arts, which I don't have a problem with, because they actually have a lot more evidence that they can look at and bring to a classroom environment than someone who just has to rely on English-speaking only. They can go to the source, they can study what's going on in Venezuela and get more things, they know what's going on, per se, in the EU than just English-speaking would. So, it's not that it's a bad thing at all, but I had got caught up on some of the language that was used in it and how it was presented, because it's how I interpret things, and a lot of things, one thing that's always changing is the way people define things, and especially in education. It's like where I work, you deal with engineers, and they're constantly redesigning things, which I think to justify their existence. So, you get this redefining things, and there's a lot of acronyms here, too, that drive me nuts, but anyways, they use a term called communicating different perspectives, and that sounds good, but I don't understand exactly what it means. You know, it, it, like, could I understand, could I tell my wife, you're pregnant, I've read some studies on this, I know how you feel, you know? I think she would probably laugh me out of the room at that point. So, it comes out to what, when I was listening to Dee and the rest of them talking, that is critical thought. If they're trying to teach critical thought, this is a great thing. The problem with it is a difficult skill set to take on. I mean, it is hard to attack things that you believe in and to look at it critically, and, and I, for one, I was raised along the lines of Pentecostal, and I attend a Baptist church. Some of the things taught there drive me nuts, but they challenged me, and I got to back up my beliefs and my opinions with whether they hold up to the evidence at hand. So, last month, when we were here, there was a couple of students that talked about clean energy and why don't we have it? And this should be, we should have this now, and this gets to me because we live in Alice in Wonderland, in my opinion, as far as things go with technology and energy and everything else. They have no idea what it was like to live in the 1600s, 1400s, when cities rained down soot on you, because people heated their houses with coal, and the dangers that that brought on with coal fires and chimney sweepers had to come around and do this. They have no idea what that was like with open sewers, when death and disease came by the name of plagues. It, it was just, they have no concept of this. And then, we look at today, and we want to judge things on what comes out of an exhaust pipe, whether it's electric or gas, we're still converting energy into motion, and in order to, to do this, it's either going to be stored in one form or another. And to look at it, well, there's nothing coming out of this thing, it still came from somewhere, and it wasn't from Hogwarts, where someone waved the wand over it. It has something called an electric motor and a battery in it, and that battery was mined from somewhere and had to be taken out of the ground and refined. And electric motors are big windings of copper. You look at all the cars that are on the streets today, and you figure out how much copper you would need to mine to, to make up all these electric motors. It is a, a lot, a lot more than's out there.
30 seconds.
To think of all these things is critical. I'm, I'm one who's in favor of electric cars. There's a lot less to work on. There's very few moving parts. I mean, the only thing really, maintenance, is your suspension, but you don't, you're not able to reserve the energy for long periods of time. Instead of taking minutes to refill, it takes hours, and this is critical thought. These are things that you examine, you take apart to think about things, and that's not what I see, and that's not what I hear, and it's not what I see coming out of schools today or from students talk.
Time.
Anyways, thank you very much for your time. Have a Merry Christmas and a blessed New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us? Okay. We'll now move on to our minute approval. There are five sets of minutes for approval. November 8th, our regular board meeting. November 8th, executive session. November 9th, executive session for expulsion. November 13th, executive session for expulsion, and then, November 21st, an executive session for expulsion. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Brusink. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda? Discussion? Any changes? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications for the evening. Dr. Gray?
A bunch of them tonight, which I don't have any, but tonight, we're blessed with many of them.
There's a blizzard?
Yeah, yeah. First one is from the Plowshare, the co-president thanking the South High Key Club students for participation or volunteering in their fashion show fundraiser. There are 14 students from, from South who did participate in that event of volunteers, so we do have, we do, our, our students are volunteering. The second letter is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight, and he's congratulating Waukesha South for winning sportsmanship awards in football, boys soccer, boys cross-country, girls swim, and girls golf. Our third letter is also from Commissioner Sternig, congratulating Waukesha North for winning sportsmanship awards in boys soccer, girls cross-country, girls tennis, and girls golf. And finally, one more from, from Mr. Sternig, this time congratulating West High for winning sportsmanship awards in boys soccer, girls tennis, and girls golf.
Great.
And those, that's my correspondence.
Thank you. That's some excellent news. Mrs. Brusink, do you have a report on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
Not tonight, Mr. Como. Thank you.
Moving on to our Safety Committee report given by Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Safety Committee met this morning, December 13th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Service Building. The first item discussed was the incident reports from the students and the workers, and they, those reports were reviewed. The next item discussed, Glenn shared, Glenn ordered that as shared information with his Glenn shared, Glenn ordered that his shared information with his, from his meeting with the Environmental Management Consultants, or EMC, regarding online service training for maintenance staff. These online training sessions are much more flexible with the work schedule and also are very cost-effective. The discussion was then carried on to how others in the district can take part in these training modules, and HR will be consulted regarding that. The next meeting for the Safety Committee will take place on Wednesday, January 10th, 2018, at 9:00 AM at the service building. And that is my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Reinichak?
Thank you. Amanda, what is, and it says new business, AEDs, that stands for?
It's the resuscitation devices.
Automatic defibrillator.
Thank you.
Electric defibrillators.
Thank you.
Wasn't very helpful there.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy.
Sure.
Moving on to our charter, school, and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. I have several things to report on this evening. When I look at it, it all centered on something going on at North High School this year, this time. November 28th, North held the second session of their Genesis Project, which strives to increase partnerships with community organizations. A number of potential partners were there. And following, a visit to several classrooms participated in some constructive interchanges, one of which led to the next item, which centers on the Avid program. One of those partners that we, in the tour, was, is the Director of Hispanic Collaborative Network. She expressed much interest in our programs, particularly in Avid. And this week, she will be meeting with Amanda Wagner, Amanda Roddy, and myself for a deeper understanding of that program. A side note to that, while I met with Amanda Wagner to set up that meeting, I saw another bright light. We were in the library at North High School, and at that time, there was a representative from UWM meeting in a side room, one-on-one with students who had applied for, participating at UWM. The representative was telling them on the spot of their acceptance, if they were not being accepted, they would spend some time debriefing and giving feedback to what the student might do on a further submission. That was something new to me. I think we actually saw that in the paper in the meantime. But I saw two of those, at least two of the kids came out of there, big smile on their faces with a new T-shirt and a UWM pinnet. And, you know, compared to the agony of sitting there waiting for a piece of mail to come, and then telling you you didn't get it, you don't know why, this is great. So I was very appreciative of seeing that. Last item is the Inspire. The advisory group met last week and received an update on some changes. The Inspire program is going to be moving from being a nine-through-12 program to a nine-through-nine-and-10 program. A number of the students over the last couple of years found difficulty in scheduling classes they wanted to get into as juniors and seniors. The scheduling didn't work particularly well with the two different programs. The juniors and seniors will still have the option for, I should say, be able to take options in certain electives in Inspire if they wish to. We had parents there with us that night, and it really was pretty well-accepted, as it's going to be okay this way. It makes sense they'll be able to get into some of the advanced classes that they wanted to get into anyway. So this will be better. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our consent agenda. We'll begin with our public gift staring. We had a few, didn't we, this month? See, now I should have forgotten your name. I could have given you a second or two more.
To be forgettable, actually, but. Four gifts tonight. Rose Glen Elementary School received $2,000 from Central Services Company, Inc., to be used for landscaping for the front of the school. Waukesha South High School received a 2002 Hyundai Santa Fe with an estimated value of $1,440 from Pam Schlosser, sorry Pam, if I missed that, to be used in the automotive class. Butler Middle School received $1,000 from Gregory and Linda Burns to help support Butler families in need. And the last gift, Whittier Elementary received $1,500 from St. Luke's Lutheran Church to help support the unique needs of the Whittier students.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those gifts. Those are always welcome, and we have a very generous community here. Thank you. Your agenda includes a variety of categories for approval. And in a little bit, I'll give you an opportunity to set aside anything that you might want to consider separately. We did have expulsions for November 9th, and November 13th, and November 21st. Confidential communication regarding the details of each of those expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number one G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular board meeting. Approval of consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Does anyone have a desire to set anything aside for separate consideration at this time? Okay, seen none. Will you please take the roll call, Sue? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Madden, would you first please make the motion? Ah, it's been a long day.
Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of three resignations, one retirement date correction, one leave of absence, and three new teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Now we have a motion. Do we have a second? Given by Mr. Deetz. Any discussion? Okay, Sue.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Mr. Gray, do you have a superintendent's report?
First item, on December 2nd, we held our first annual enrollment event. And I call it first annual because I know we will doing these, doing more of these in the future. But we had all the schools present, along with academies and other programs that we have throughout the district, so that parents could do a one-stop shopping. They could come and ask questions of the principals or the teachers who were involved, get a look at what kind of programs we have. And as you know, we have open choice in the district, so wherever a student, wherever a seat is open and the student qualifies, they can attend. So it was a very, very good event, very well-attended, even though we were competing with Santa Claus and some other people who were at different schools. This next year, we have that, we have Santa Claus covered for this event. So more detail will be coming on that one, but he's in the room.
I thought so.
Yeah, it is. But we did get around 50 new students, which is very helpful. And some of those students are coming from, coming back to us from private schools and other districts and so on, or coming back to the district from open enrollments. So that was very, very exciting in that piece. So thanks to Terry Schuster and Mary Jo King, who engineered the event with our enrollment department. And again, this will be, this time next year, we'll be seeing that event again. District report cards are out. You will be seeing more of that in future TNL programs, I'm sure. But across the district, we increased, our schools increased their scores by a net of 58 points. What that means is there were a lot of schools that went up, there were some that went down, and there were some schools that didn't get a score because they were too small. There are five categories for each school to score on, and some of our charters and smaller programs did not have enough students to score in all five of those categories, so they did not get a score. But at this point, we are, of the top 10 districts in the state, we're number four. I think we should be number two, and hopefully next year, we're going to compete for number one in the top 10 district score on the school report card. So I think we're close enough to that where we can, we can compete there. Also, I don't know if this is going to come up in the FNF, but you have your, our audit report. This is very exciting stuff, so please read through that for the next FNF meeting. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a sleep aid. In any event, one other, one other item of note, on December 22nd, they have the annual South Christmas concert. It's at 9:00 AM. Those are always wonderful events, so if you have an opportunity to attend that event on the 22nd, you will be very, you will be very pleased with the concert. This evening, the North students talked about the play, and they did, they did work me into one of them, something about how I'm not getting any younger. It was a comedy, it was like a Halloween comedy, so I guess that was appropriate. But all three of our high schools have absolutely wonderful theater programs. And if you ever get a chance to see the many plays they put on, each school does one or two each semester, and they're absolutely fantastic. We have a lot of talented students. We have three wonderful theater teacher-directors, and it's always a great, great opportunity to attend those plays. And my last item is, last week, we opened the Les Paul Garage. And Terry, do we have that on, do we have a video of that? This is from Channel, was it Channel, Channel 4 came there, and they did a lot of taping, but this is, this is a little bit about the event.
Now, when you hear the name Les Paul, one word comes to mind. That's guitar. For the school bearing his name in Waukesha, they opened up a whole new area of the building, has nothing to do with music, but man, it would make him proud. Sean Gallagher out at this school today as they open the door for the Les Paul Garage.
Yeah, less is more, pun fully intended here. Less garage, more of a hands-on classroom. But its symbolism is what they were going for. Les Paul came up with his greatest invention in a garage, and the middle school hopes this garage will inspire the students to become the next Wizard of Waukesha. Les Paul created the electric guitar in his garage, so it's fitting the students at Les Paul Middle School can walk through a garage door when coming up with their own creations.
I love it. It's so cool just to look around and see all the good things that we have in this room and to build everything in here.
This garage is amazing. It's like, this is my last year here. I wish I had this in sixth grade, because I have like, I had all these ideas.
But you won't see much in the way of music in here. It's more about coding, 3D printing, things that fall into STEM categories in school, which is what Les was all about.
Les Paul was an innovator. Our kids, even here at school, you know, know Les Paul as the guitar player. But we've often reminded them, you know, he's one of the only people that's in the Innovators, the Inventors Hall of Fame and the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame.
This is an aspect that I think Les would be over the moon about.
And with what they learn inside Les Paul's garage, it may inspire them to be the next great inventor from Waukesha.
It makes me feel like the possibilities are endless. I mean, you could just, there's no failure here.
No one like necessarily like comes like, oh, yay, ready for school. But like, they're like, oh, something new, something cool that might help us later in life. They're totally ready. I have so many people wanting to do the robotics club.
Now, this could just be just the beginning for the garage. The principal tells me they may expand if they get a positive response, really anything to inspire the kids. But really, it just looks like they're playing with a bunch of blocks, but really big stuff.
Hi, hi, Cameron. If you find a way to reach the kids, you stick with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of excitement from the students. The young lady that you saw at the end there, I think her, she was gonna be a...
Now, when you hear the name Les...
It was that good. But I think her goal was to be a nuclear physicist or something to that. I mean, something, I mean, she was really...
NASA. She wanted to go to NASA, wasn't it?
Yes, okay, yeah. So I mean, it's great to present these opportunities for the students so that they can dream a little bit and maybe look forward to something. And again, these kind of programs, the academic career planning, those are the kind of things that I'm hoping will engage students that maybe haven't been fully engaged. They'll get a chance to see that, what they can be or what they can become, and hopefully that helps overall. I know it will help put us in number one of the top 10 schools on the report card list, but hopefully it helps the individual students to be whatever they want to be when they grow up.
Yeah, it was a great event. Thank you, Terry, and others for coordinating that event. The students were so energized. And just so you know, it had been open just Monday, we were there on Friday, so it was open for a week. And these students came after school for an hour and a half, not just those few that you saw, but there were others. And they were using their own time after school to be in the lab and learning beyond what they were learning in the classroom. The other thing that I observed, which was fantastic, these kids are thinking about their future, like you had mentioned, the young lady, you know, saying, hey, this is what I want to do when I grow up. Well, they were thinking even to next year. One of the students, Kayden, he said, I'm gonna go to all the open houses for the high schools. So these are all eighth graders. So he's gonna go to all the open houses for every high school, and he wants to go and take a peek at the Engineering Academy, which, you know, these things for, in one week's period of time, might have opened up a door for this young man of, you know, something that he thinks he might be passionate about. So it was pretty cool.
One of them wants to go to sixth grade next year.
That was, yeah. And that's, that's pretty exciting. Usually, I mean, when I was in eighth grade, I couldn't wait to get out of middle school and into high school. But it's good that they want to be there and participate in these things, so.
And I'll tell you, the work that Rob Bennett, the principal, and Lee Hansen has done over there, they've both been there a long time, and they have really inspired students in a lot of different ways for many years. This really, I think, is, is probably the highest level of inspiration I've seen in a while, so.
That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports, we're gonna start with our Technology Committee, presented by Patrick McCaffey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gray kind of stole my thunder. As he said, we have the annual financial audit. I don't really feel it'd be appropriate to read the entire report tonight during my report. So I'll stick to the five-to-10-page summary for reading. And, oh, wait, it's not on my agenda. So I guess I'll stick to...
That's next month.
That's next month. So I guess I'll have to revert to what's on our agenda from the committee. We had one action item, and it had to do with the online at-risk school. The committee reviewed a contract that was proposed for a new online at-risk school. During the discussion, it was determined that further information clarification were needed, and the action item was tabled until a later meeting. That's a summary of quite a long discussion regarding the online at-risk school. And I think it goes beyond just taking it from one committee to the next and something like that. And I'm hoping that maybe we'll have a broader dialogue that will include both FNF and TNL before we move forward with this activity. In terms of information items, there was four information items. And probably the most exciting was the Tax Incremental District Financing Plan, which is usually not exciting, but in this case, it was a discussion of up to $3 million that could be credited to the district at the end of a very, very successful TIF, TID, in this case, TID 14. It turns out that the city of Waukesha and the school district of Waukesha would be the two primary beneficiaries of this very successful TIF. The proposal on the table, and we had at our meeting Mr. Richard Abbott, Director of Finance for the city, and Kevin Launer, City Administrator. And they discussed the TID amendment being considered to transfer funds from TID 14 to other TIDS to allow for the early closure of other TIDS. Each taxing authority impacted by a TID is allowed to have one voting member. And I believe there's five members altogether on an oversight TID board. This group would be voted on amendment being considered by the city, and Mr. Como is the district representative. In regard to this particular TID, there's conflicting interest between us as a school board or school district and the city. It's not that we can't resolve that perspective and come to what's good for both parties. But how they tax and how we tax and how those funds come and are used are completely different between the city of Waukesha and other entities and a school district. So it's not an easy situation when you have that amount of money and moving it from one TID to another. So Mr. Como is supposed to be our primary representative, and it was great to have the people from the city at our meeting. I was very pleased that they were very understanding that we needed to work together to come up with the best solution. Item number two was the health insurance. Last December, the committee was asked to approve a new prescription benefit manager. And part of that discussion included laying out a plan to bid out our health insurance provider services during... And part of that discussion included the now the plan to bid out our health insurance provider services during calendar year 2017. The committee was presented with background information on the work completed to date and details under recommendation for the 2018-19 benefit plan year. This item will be brought back in January for approval. On the agenda was the E-Achieve Marketing Plan update. We really actually didn't cover that. There was, because of time considerations. We did have the information in our packet. I hope we'll be able to take that up again at a later date. As a matter of summary, there was, this is a follow-up discussion from this September. We reviewed a breakdown of the initial 2018-19 E-Achieve marketing budget. A final budget will be approved as part of the 2018-19 budget process. And we had a monthly budget report. The committee was presented a budget report for the month of November. $194,514 was reported in general fund revenue. And $10,544,846 was expended during the month. $926,352 was reported in special education fund revenue. And $2,302,0036 was expended. The district operated in accordance with our budget projection, is within our budget production, projection in other areas. I really don't have any discussion items tonight. We could go into the audit, but I think we'll pass on that tonight. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Because I probably would be fined if we went over the audit tonight. We'll move on to teaching and learning given by Mrs. President.
Thank you, Mr. Como. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on December 5th, 2017 at 6 o'clock PM. There are two action items and one information item and one discussion items that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The first action item is the approval of middle school global education course. The World Language Department has developed a course for students whose path has led them to an interest in global studies. But one which is global in context rather than regionally specific to French and Spanish-speaking regions of the world. The pathway for learning is currently underway at Saratoga STEM. The STEM Cultures Pathway has been very successful in a highly desirable World Language Semester Law and Course. This team aligned the design of this pathway into a course that could be offered at all middle schools. The overarching goal is to ensure all learners have a pathway to develop the capacity to demonstrate global competency through their ability to investigate the world, communicate with diverse audiences, examine their own and others' perspectives, and take action across the curriculum and in college and the community experiences. On a vote of 5-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the middle school global education course. And we request board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart.
I think I'll just add a little bit to it. There was some conversation back and forth, and Mr. Reese mentioned his conversations with us also, which was positive. There were some questions about some of the wording in there, and it's been ironed out in, in terms of how deep are the kids expected to go into some stuff that's really- on a world level, they haven't figured out how to solve it yet and stuff like that. So after we had the conversations back and forth a couple of times, I think that it's getting a very positive view. So it's, in my mind, it's worth doing.
One of the things that, just, this is an observation. When we see something working at one school and we think it could be applied in other areas, this is a, a great example of something working at STEM and looking to apply it at middle schools. You heard another one this evening in your, you know, your reports and student representatives' reports avid. You know, South really embraced that for, for quite some time, and that seemed to be pretty successful. And that's, components of that are spreading, and that program's spreading to other schools. And I, I like to see that. I like to see where there are good practices and successful practices being spread. So this seems like it's, it's, it's one of those. And Jody, I don't know if you want to comment a little bit on some of the successes that they've had at, at STEM?
You know, they've been leaders in the STEM Cultures classes, the bottom line. And so they've had huge student participation and interest. And we kinda were asking ourselves along the way, why don't we offer this everywhere, as you mentioned? So we're excited about the student interest at the other schools. The teachers are really on board and collaborative, working across all, all of the middle schools to offer this. And so we're excited about the potential at all the schools.
Thank you, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 9-0 for the approval of the middle school global education course. Barb?
All right, next we have approval of middle school 7th and 8th grade Lifetime Wellness Physical Education Course. The current model at the middle school level has physical education as a grade-specific course. This type of model restricts the scheduling possibilities and limits the potential choices that a student has because of course offering conflicts. By restructuring the manner in which we present the physical education curriculum, we are increasing the choices that the students will have when choosing courses. Students can choose a more traditional approach, a wellness-based approach, or a combination of the two, all while meeting the DPI requirement and increasing flexibility. On a vote of 5-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the middle school 7th and 8th grade Lifetime Wellness Physical Education Course. We request approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart.
This, as I mentioned in the TNL meeting, is one of the most common sense things I've seen in 20 some odd years on the school board. I mean, it just makes a lot of sense, the way it flows and the ability to open up more paths for the kids to get into different parts of the FIAD program. And it also is, is more reflective of the way we are doing FIAD at the high school level. So this, to me, oh, this is gonna be a pun if I say it's a slam dunk, isn't it? Probably shouldn't talk, anyway, it's a good one.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions before we vote, because, you know, physical education is always an interesting topic. Normally, there's a movement or a professional push for something like this, this initiative. And I was wondering if that was the case in this particular one? Was, usually like there's a national organization or someone recommending that you go in this direction? Was there something like that in this case, or was this just a district initiative?
Jody?
Not recently, Kurt. I think to Bill's point, it just, the middle school is a little bit of a slow learner in this process, and so-
That was not my point.
Well, they just caught up to what has been the national norm over the past five or six years.
Just so happens, I know we have a lot of expertise in this area, so I kinda wanted to get some feedback on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 9-0. I think we're caught up now. Barb?
Okay, next is an information item. The Waukesha Transition Academy Technology Update. The personalization of the iPad applications to student needs has led to powerful outcomes for students in the Waukesha Transition Academy. Students in the program for 18 to 21-year-olds have learned skills that transfer to post-secondary education, the job market, and lifelong learning. Demonstrations of student successes were shared at the meeting as part of the board's goal to give updates on how iPads are improving student instruction at all levels. The next is a discussion item as needed. Student Achievement Update, E-Achieve Academy. With 50% of the student body new to the school each year and a large at-risk population, E-Achieve faces unique challenges as it relates to student achievement. The presentation highlighted areas where they've seen success in helping students grow, identified areas where they are still working to crack the code, and outlined next steps to address edges of growth. This concludes my report for the Teaching and Learning Committee. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. The last item is a discussion item, so, Mr. O'Brien?
You know, since, you know, a number of us board members were around when we started E- what wasn't E-Achieve at the time, but when we first talked about this program. And there was a lot of work into making sure that we reached out to the type of student that would be successful in a, in a, in this type of environment. And that, a number of other attempts to implement, because it was new at the time, there weren't a lot of them out there. That was where they said that their biggest challenge was, is that they didn't really pick the right, or attract the right type of student to the program for them to be successful in the program. And our initial target was anywhere from 600 to 1,000 kids in, at the high school level. And I've always been the biggest supporter of E-Achieve. And I've gone to every graduation and, and I'm thrilled for what we do for the children that are in E-Achieve. But I'm not pleased with our enrollment levels. And, you know, discussions of the type of, you know, children that are attending it, that they need to be a special on-risk category, at-risk category for a significant part of the population. So I, I think we need a deep dive into our program and see how we can advance it along its initial goals and objectives, which is to have a high-quality school that would attract students from across the state. Not that we're against at-risk kids, we're not. We need to have the programs that are being suggested for the at-risk children that attend our E-Achieve school. And we had some of that discussion at FNF, that should have that for all our schools, okay? But I think we need to take a harder look at where we're at and why we aren't where our goals should be relative to how we initiated and launched the program. Not that we don't have, you know, I'm not trying to take shots at anything, but we should be up around 700 to 1,000 kids. And, and I know we have lots of competition out there. But we should be, with the quality of school that we have, we should be at the top of attracting kids.
Other comments, discussion? Yeah, I, I echo those comments, Mr. O'Brien. But I also do know that, no, during the selection process, the whole enrollment process, I don't think we'll ever be able to get to a point where we can do a perfect job screening, nor can we legally. We have to follow certain statutes that come into play. So those need to be taken into consideration as to who we can essentially not allow to enroll if they have applied. And that's where it gets a little bit tricky. And, you know, I, no matter how good of a job we do, I think we will have students that will need assistance and will struggle. And so I kind of view this academy as one that is kind of parallel to Waukesha East. Now, the programs are different at East, but we're dealing with at-risk kids. So this is kind of like our, just like the title says, our online school for at-risk kids. So I don't know if we can actually integrate them into East. And I think I had heard on Monday that that really isn't a possibility because online charter schools have certain things that they have to do so that you can get the appropriate funding. So, and I think that was brought up at our two or three months ago, why don't we just add them to East? So there's a lot of complexities here that we need to look at. But I do think we need to come up with some way to deal with our students who are enrolled in our online school, who are at risk.
You have to be careful, we're not wandering too far away from the agenda item, which is not the on-risk element, but it's the achievement at the current E-Achieve school. So I'm just cautioning us to be careful where we're going here.
Fair enough, fair enough. Mr. O'Brien?
That's a good point. That could have, that could have evolved to that area very quickly. When we talk about addressing the at-risk children in the E-Achieve program, I think there was fairly in our discussions, there was comments that yes, we should make sure we provide the services for E-Achieve children who are at risk. And obviously, we don't turn away those children, or we're not allowed to, and nor do we want to. Just like we would at any of our other schools. You know, we want our E-Achieve school to be the same quality and level as our brick and mortar schools. That's always been our goal, and part of that is serving at-risk children successfully. What I will say is that we do have, in the E-Achieve program, a grade level of, you know, we've gone from all the way down to almost, I think, 4th grade now. And lots of grades, and we're still well below our initial goals for 5 grades. And, or 4 grades. And, and I just, I just think continuing to tag more stuff onto E-Achieve when we haven't done it as, as per the original plan. You know, we need to, we need to think about that going forward. We do need to do it right with E-Achieve, and that means adding the resources to support at-risk kids. But we can't just continue to just try to find a new way of marketing to a different populace to bring in more at-risk kids. I don't think that's the solution. I think the solution is to try and make sure that we are seen as the top online school in the state. And we should be. We have professional teachers running the program. And I've, the graduation, I've seen outstanding results. And we, we really do have some, a jewel here that we need to make sure the entire state knows about.
Other comments, questions? Okay, Barb, well, thank you for that.
Thank you, completes my report.
Moving on to our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Manning.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one action item tonight, and that is the approval of the school calendar for 2018-2019. It was provided to the board in your packet. All employees were given the opportunity to provide feedback via the school district of Waukesha Connect and the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff Members in September, October, and November. We also obtained parent feedback from the Superintendent's Advisory Council for PTO leaders in October and November. A few things to note on this calendar. The Summer Institute and teacher workdays before school will be held the week of August 27th to the 31st. New Teacher Welcome will be held the week before. The first day of school will be Tuesday, September 4, 2018. Early release days will be held three times. October 24th, 2018, and March 1st and April 18, 2019. Students will be released two hours early on those days. Professional Development Days will be scheduled for October 25, 2018, and January 21 and 22, 2019. January 21st is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thanksgiving break will be November 21st to the 23rd, 2018. Holiday break will be December 24, 2018, to January 1st, 2019. Spring break will be the last week of March, March 25th to the 29th, 2019. Last day of school for students will be June 7th, 2019. The last day of work for teachers will be Monday, June 10th, 2019. Mr. President, I move to approve the school district of Waukesha calendar for 2018-2019 school year as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzing. Discussion? Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. Pa, I thought we went away from the early release days because parents had a hard time picking up kids or finding childcare for them. I thought that they said that they actually liked the change.
Well, parents were given the opportunity through the PTOs, through Connect, the advisory councils were, and this is what they came up with. So this was a consensus of all the collected information.
I'd also like to add that those early release days are backed up to days, they're non-school days the next day. And when I talked to my parent advisory group, you know, I mean, they weren't totally crazy about it, but they understood the need for it. And, and they supported it because those days were backed up to non-school days. So apparently, that gave people an opportunity if they were gonna travel- So apparently that gave people an opportunity, if they were going to travel or whatever, to, to go early. And I, this, we haven't, we have heard, not heard much of an issue this year, but we do keep listening for, for ongoing issues. We also have some opportunities where there is after-school care that would start earlier in the, in the day for some parents who just can't get there. So we've tried to address all the possible issues that, that could come up with those. And I think as a result, it's, it's working well so far, so.
Well, thank you for having all of the input that you did have on that and trying to listen to everyone's needs, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote on the twenty nineteen, 2018, 2019 school year calendar?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Pat?
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to our Policy Committee, given by Chairman Baumgart.
Thank you. I have received a phone call earlier today from our District Secretary chiding me for the fact I have a seven-page script.
Oh, yeah?
Do we need to take a brief recess first?
It is possible that we could reduce the amount of time that's going to need to cover this, so I'll, I'll explain why. We had a first reading last month on twenty-one different policy changes. And the majority of, the vast majority of those, if not all of them, were basically addicted to us as government changes. We, we, here and, and then in our Policy Committee meeting had five adjustments to make. And those I have separated from the other sixteen in our action process. So the first day action item is Policy 0166, constructing the agenda. We had some conversation on that at the previous meeting and we added a few words. Other as needed, we made an example, this is, such as an example to adjourn to executive session would fit into that section. Other as needed to help explain why that's on there. With that change, it was approved at the November 21st Policy Committee meeting. And I would move for approval of 0166 as adjusted.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien, discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Thank you. The next one is, is a group of three policies, 1630.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01, covering family and medical leave absence for administration, professional staff, and support staff. This, we did have a change since the first reading, quite simply, that came to us again from the government to changing the definition of the word spouse, yeah, changing the definition of the word spouse on all three policies. Other than that, it's all as we previously got from government direction. And as such, I would move for approval of those three policies. It was passed at the November 21st Policy Committee meeting. And I move for approval.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Same by Mr. O'Brien? Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Bill?
Thank you. Another of the, those twenty-one, Policy Number 2411, School Counseling and Academic and Career Planning. The policy has been re-titled as School Counseling and Academic and Career Planning, combining those two to incorporate the requirements of administrative rule, PI 26. The policy has been revised to remove the prior optional status of career awareness and planning and incorporate the requirements of it into the policy language. We made some changes to paragraph one of this one. Let me just get myself caught up on it. Yeah, where we brought, all the words have been brought forward in it. And the description below is now addressing all appropriate staff rather than to separate the teachers from the career counselors. So it's all appropriate staff. And with that, I would move for approval of Policy 2411.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Amanda Roddy? She raised her hand first. Any discussion on this policy change? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Okay. Now there are sixteen policies that are as they were presented to you last month without any further changes. And I will read any of those that you want read to you, read to you, but I don't think it's necessary because you have it in front of you. So revisions to Policy 0100, 0131.1, 0144.1, 0164.2, 2260, 2261.01, 2430, 2431, 5111, 5421, 5610, 8320, 8330, 8350, 8452, and 8800. All of these policies were passed at the Policy Committee meeting in November 21st. And at this point, I would move for their approval as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Mrs. Brzing. Discussion? Trim that down, Mr. Baumgart.
Well, I'm sure everybody read all the stuff in front of them, so.
Well, and we have a few times, actually. And these are primarily, as you've noted in the past, they're federal.
There really is no debate.
Federal and state laws that have changed, that we're just making sure that we're appropriately updating our policies.
That's correct, it's quite, it's quite straightforward.
Mr. O'Brien?
I've found when you don't read what's coming out of policy, you're in, you're in for surprises, so I do read what comes out of policy. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Okay, we have one more to catch up on here. We have one policy that will be coming forward next month after first reading this evening that I will present to you now. It is Policy 2370, Educational Options. Oh, excuse me, it's, it's the deletion of Policy 2370 and replacing it with Policy 8146, which does sound confusing. Let me read this a little bit to you. Policy 2370 is about the various educational options such as independent study correspondence courses, GED and HSED, that the policy could make available to students outside of our standard courses offered by teachers. This policy had previously been placed in the section of curriculum in the 2000 list. As typical curriculum options expanded to include a wide variety of options beyond standard courses offered by teachers, these options were encompassed by the standard meaning of curriculum and are often contained with curriculum materials and course selections. Meanwhile, the state passed, again, government passed a law and revised that law to require districts to provide notification to the community of all educational options available to our students, to their students, as well as other educational institutions. As the policy has been revised by this law and subsequent revisions that become quite a bit simpler, we've got them on our website. There's no need to have the entire list that was on the previous two, excuse me, yeah, yeah, previous 2370 because we'll be changing it every couple of months. So it is now okay to just have the notification of the educational options as presented in about three lines on Policy 8146. So that is the rationale behind this change of deleting Policy 2370 and replacing it with 8146. That will be further discussed in our meeting next Tuesday, December 19th.
And can be discussed now, too?
It can be discussed now, that's, that's correct. If anybody has any questions.
Any comments or considerations for the Policy Committee to take up? Okay?
Okay. So that will be, consider this the first reading for that. It will be discussed next week and brought forward in January for final approval. And with that, we've gone through seven pages of script.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. There's a lot to cover.
Yes, we do.
Moving on to our other business. Our, our first item is any recommendations for future board or committee meetings? Mr. Baumgart?
I didn't run out of time yet, did I? No, I actually.
Oh, you cut some out of the script, so, you know.
This is, this is part of this item. One of the things that I've observed a little bit recently is, is it really confusion or just lack of understanding? We have things on our agendas called presentation, action, discussion, information, and we are not, in all committees and on the board, treating these exactly the same way. I mean, we, and actually, I look for some definitions of how, what they mean and it's kind of ambiguous. So I've quite simply mentioned to Mr. Como that I would like to take some time to look into the definitions that are available, what we would like those four words to mean when we have, when we put our agendas together. So we're doing it the same way at our half a dozen committees and at the board meeting. And I would like, I'll just, if it's okay with everybody, I'll just take some time and, and look into that and bring it back at a future date. And I've actually talked already with Mr. Cook, Dr. Cook, about this as well because there are some logical ways to address this. And it's really not written down anyplace very clearly, so that's, that would be the item I'm bringing forward here.
I think the hope is to lead to consistency, right?
That's all.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate you taking that on.
Thank you.
Any other considerations for future board or committee meetings for agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. We do not have a need for our second item under other business. But we do have a need for Item C. Mr. Baumgart?
I had moved to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parentheses, one, parentheses, C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to discuss preliminary notices of non-renewal. That's my motion.
Second.
Same by Mr. McCaffrey. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on that?
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. We'll go immediately into executive session. Chris, do you know about how long it'll be?
Seven minutes.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Wow. So a short period of time. We, we may, we may be reconvening into open session, we're not sure. So if any of you in the audience would like to hang around for a bit, we may be doing that, but I don't know that as of yet. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a nice evening.